I'd like to resume our meeting with Scott Gordon to present on the fingerprint issue.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's the same version of the regulations that I proposed and gave to you a month ago. I haven't received any additional feedback or questions, so if you have any questions about the regulations. I do actually want to correct one thing that I stated about an hour ago. Ken had asked me about some of the complaints that were filed and some of the revocations of the license. How did we find out about them? And actually, there were two or three that we found out about specifically from the fingerprints. We got it reported from the prosecutor's offices, but we also did get that information through Rat Pack.
Okay. Thank you. Are there questions or comments on this issue? Scott, I just wanted you to remind us of the process from here on. Once we act today, then remind me again what the steps are.
If you approve these proposed regulations for submission, then they go to the Department of Administration for them to approve the language. They also get sent to the Office of the Attorney General, who reviews them for legality, to make sure that it doesn't conflict with any particular statute and makes certain that you actually have the authority to make this type of regulation. Then there will be a public hearing across the street. I believe the period is 60 days. There will be a formal public hearing over there that I would appear at.
There or here?
There.
Really? Oh.
Then it comes back over here for absolute final approval, once everything else is done.
Okay. I thought we had the public hearing. Huh?
Well, you do also, you have a public hearing as well.
So there are two?
I don't know if they refer to the other one as a public hearing or not, but there is.
Okay. I just wanted to be clear that there are a few steps, few hoops to jump through before this is finally, you know.
Yes.
In our regulations.
Right.
Okay. Oh, yeah, I knew there was. I just thought it might be good to have that part of our public record. Okay, Kathy Bush.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a couple of clarifications. Pretty sure I have this straight, but I want to make sure. In this updated version of the regulations, people would have their fingerprints taken once, not every time they renew.
That's correct.
Okay. And then you said there's several steps that we go through, so what kind of a, I mean, I know you don't know, but what kind of a timeframe? Are we talking six months, a year?
Assuming that there are no dramatic changes or no substantial changes between now and the end of the process, I would guess between 90 and 120 days.
Okay.
It may be up to six months. I do not anticipate, I don't know why it would take a year.
Okay. And when then, when they're completely passed, then that goes into effect immediately, so people who, after it's past the final time, when they have to renew, then that's when the fingerprint situation will come into effect for people who are on a renewal cycle. I know the ones that are new are already getting fingerprinted. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Deana Horst.
Thank you, Madam Chair. If the legislature passes the bill that they have and the governor signs it, will there be any changes to our fingerprinting policy that we, as it currently is stated, that we would have to make?
Yes. If this proposal doesn't get approved and Senate Bill 335 does get passed, then I would come back before you again and ask you to pass it again. Because essentially, the version of Senate Bill 335, which did make it out of Education Committee, mirrors the regulation. The language is a little different, but they do the same thing.
Right.
There's not a conflict, I don't believe.
Okay. That's what I wanted to make sure of that.
They changed Senate Bill 335 from the way that it was originally introduced to how it was passed out of the Education Committee. My understanding is it's actually bounced back to the Education Committee. I don't know what's going on with it. But the most recent version parallels what we've proposed as the regulation.
It probably went to an exempt committee before, and then it has to go back to be sent back out. So, anyway. Thanks. Thank you, Madam Chair. Are there other questions or comments before I call for the motion? Okay, then I would entertain a motion that the State Board of Education approve the submission of the amendment to the criminal history records, check Regulation 91-1-214, to the Department of Administration and the Office of the Attorney General for review. Would someone make that motion? Carolyn Campbell, seconded by Jim McNeese. Is there discussion? I think we've discussed it several times over the past few months, and we discussed it four years ago, and did not go ahead and approve this. And I have said from the beginning, when it was before us this time, this is about having a systematic process for ensuring that nothing is slipping through the cracks. And I feel it's very important to go ahead and act on that at this time. If there are no further comments, all in favor, raise your right hand. I see nine in favor, opposed. Steve Roberts is voting in opposition, so the motion carries. Thank you. Now we are ready for board, oh, Carolyn, my memory's about this long. Carolyn Campbell, ask for a moment of personal privilege.
Yes, I want to thank you, and I'm going to ask the ladies that are sitting in the back to come forward with trios, so that you all can see them. Today is Trio Day at the State Capitol. Oh, and a gentleman has come in. Okay, the Kansas Trio Professionals. I want the board members to see you, because you all work hard. There's 57 trio programs in the state of Kansas. They serve over 15,000 students and clients. They work with low-income, first-generation students, or persons with disabilities. And last year, I was privileged to be able to visit them at their day, and so this is their day, and they've come to see us, and they've been at the Capitol. And I would also like for Ms. A.J. Cipio to come forward, because she's the Assistant Director of the Kansas African American Affairs Commission. Dr. Mildred Edwards is the director. And so I'm, we all are very thankful for all that you do for our children and their families, and I just wanted everybody to see you. I'd like you, say your names, please.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Mike Hunley. I'm at the University of Kansas.
Marsha Deetz. I'm from Barton County Community College. K-Mark Morgan, Wichita State University.
Kathy Zarke, Kansas State University.
And Jean Gerhard, Kansas State University.
Thank you so much for coming, sharing some time with us.
Thank you.
Again, thank you, and we're happy that you came to visit us this afternoon. And Iwa.
I just would like to know what trio means, stands for. We hear so many.
Trio is actually, it's not, I will do. Sorry about that. Trio is not an acronym for anything. It actually comes about from the initial three college access programs founded in the 1960s. So, a bit confusing there.
I thought it was an acronym. I didn't use for that.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Kathy Bush has a comment.
I just wanted to kick in my two cents' worth. I have worked with K and Wichita State in my previous life, in the school district, and then also now, and they do a great job. The program is great, and it really gets some support for students, and so, thanks for coming today, and thanks for what you do for our kids.
Now, I believe we're ready for board reports. We will begin with my report. I wanted to remind all of our board members that the review and comment period is open on the Kansas licensure standards for professional education until March 31st. Diane provided information and the link in her February 28th update, so I thought, we thought you needed to be aware of that. Next, our board secretary evaluation is in your folder. Those are to be completed and returned to Diane by April 1st. So that's only a couple weeks. I tend to put those things off, and then I forget about them, so I think we all need to get busy on that. I'm sharing the section of the board policy that will require the board to approve member participation on national committees according to Policy 1005. The appointment of a state board member to represent the board on a national association, committee, or position shall be by vote of the state board. Appointment to a subcommittee, task force, or other similar group of a national association or committee shall also be approved by vote of the board if state board funds will be utilized. Therefore, the board needs to approve Jana Shaver to represent Kansas on the NASB Chiefs' and Chairs Council, Steve Roberts to serve on the NASB Rural Education Study Group, and Kathy Bush to serve on the NASB Student Engagement Study Group. We also have never formally approved Ken Willard as the Secretary Treasurer of NASB, and Jim McNeese as the new member representative. So I would entertain a motion that we approve all of those positions on national, with a national organization. Sally Cobble has a question. Sally.
Is Carolyn going to serve on GAC for NASB?
We had made that appointment in January, and it was voted on at that time, I believe.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Kathy Bush.
I'd been invited to participate in that student engagement. They had a meeting earlier. I wasn't able to attend. This one, I'm not going to be able to attend, so I haven't really been able to participate, so I don't know that you need to worry too much about it.
So we don't need to approve that?
I think maybe they'll have one other meeting, so I'm not sure that it makes much sense for me to be involved in that at this time.
Okay. So then the motion would include Jana Shaver, Steve Roberts, Ken Willard, and Jim McNeese? Moved by Sally Cobble. Is there a second? Seconded by Deana Horst. All in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you. That was a 10-0 vote, and I hope we didn't forget anybody. If we did, let me know. Okay. Next is the attorney's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I circulated a couple of memos for your update and consideration. One was raised by, at the previous meeting regarding parent-teacher conferences at the School for the Deaf. Hopefully, that answered your questions. And if not, Madeline will be available tomorrow if you want to have any follow-up. She's welcome any follow-up conversation. So I sent a memo to you, and then a follow-up email that she provided to supplement the information, so you understand that they're continuing to keep parent-teacher conferences a part of their important communication effort with the parents and working to enhance that as well. We did bring that up at the negotiation table during the negotiations. I can report just generally publicly that the, we did have negotiation session in February, and we are presenting to you for some discussion in executive session if there are any specific questions regarding those proposed changes. I will tell you that we received word that the NEA did approve and ratify those suggested modifications, which are fairly minor, and this was the second year of a two-year agreement. So we had agreed in the previous negotiation that we would have a couple of openers, and sometimes with regard to this particular contract, some of those are housekeeping items, because we need to update things so that they are consistent with the Olatha School District salary schedule. There were some other more significant items that we can talk about when we get into executive session on that. But the NEA did approve that on their side, and so that has been going on this last month. I sent you a summary of activities for the month of February. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have on that. The only other thing that I thought would be, and I asked Scott to stay in the room so that we could talk just a little bit and revisit the issue about the PPC and what occurred there. There has been, in recent months, many more PPC requests for approval of their recommendations, and so as a result, because the binder would be, you know, five or six inches thick, we just made the decision not to provide you with all of the backup and supporting documentation, but only the recommendations. If a PPC recommendation is not approved by the board, the next action would be the potential challenge, and this came up as one of the questions, what's the appeal process? Well, the legal challenge by that applicant would be to go to the district court, and it's been a couple of years since we've had one of those, but as you recall, the district court basically looks at the actions of the board and determines whether or not they relied on substantial and competent evidence in reaching their decision. And so it's important that this board, if the board rejects a recommendation of the PPC, that it come up with its own findings of fact and conclusions of law, or conclusions of recommendation, to support the decision. So in the two instances where this board did not approve the motion to adopt those findings by the PPC, that would not be the same as your own rejection and your own findings of fact. So what I believe should happen is, between now and the next board meeting, is that for those two applicants, that we circulate to the entire board all of the supporting documentation that went to the PPC, and then this board would have, the motion before the board next month would be to reject the PPC's findings and to deny licensure to those individuals, and we would, the board would need to come up with specific findings of fact and conclusions to support that decision, so that if those applicants wanted to appeal it, there would be a record of what this board's specific action was. Now, if, that would be a brand-new vote, and based on your review of that information, the outcome could be, could be different, but I don't believe that it made sense for us to just simply reverse the motion once you denied it, because I think the board needed the benefit of the supporting, all of the supporting information. So that's my recommendation, that those two matters would come back for your consideration next month. And Scott, you want to add?
To clarify, I don't believe it's appropriate to re-vote to adopt the findings. You voted. That's, the decision is made. I think the only thing that, and this is, Mark is going to give you advice on what to do on this, the only thing that needs to be done is, you've said that you reject the findings, now you just have to tell them why. And just raising your hands doesn't tell them why. That's the question the district court would ask. So really, the only thing left is for you as a board to adopt certain findings of fact and conclusions, which I believe, after making sure that everyone has access to all of the evidence that came into record during the PPC, we could draft proposed findings, and you could vote to accept those findings. And if you had anything else you wanted to add or take away from those findings, you could certainly do that by vote at the next board meeting. That's my thought on what needs to be done, and that's why it needs to be done that way. To be absolutely clear, the board always makes findings of fact, but whenever you just simply adopt the findings of the PPC, it's done for you. So I just want to make sure everybody was clear on that. It's not because it's a new process, it's just there's more to be done that hasn't been done yet.
So when we do not adopt the findings of the PPC, then we have to tell why and have our own findings.
That's right.
And that should be on the agenda for the April meeting?
I would think that'd be appropriate.
That's my recommendation, so.
Are there other questions on this issue? Okay. Oh, Ken. Ken Willard.
So what is the process for developing our findings?
That's something Mark will work out with you, or we'll figure out.
What we're discussing is that we want you to have all of the supporting information so that you can make those, and then typically, what we've done in the past is, based on the discussion that we've heard, is put together some proposed findings and conclusions, and then based on the discussion, we tweak that so that the conclusions and the findings are consistent with the discussion that we hear at the table.
So we just actually see the findings that they made their recommendation from? Actually, we didn't approve any findings, in my view. We approved or disapproved recommendations based on their findings. We haven't seen the findings.
That would be the purpose of the next meeting, is to have your, to come up with your own findings, but I didn't feel it was appropriate to have, for you to have findings until you had the supporting documentation and data, because you rejected their conclusions.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Okay. Kathy Bush.
Just a question. So will we get these findings electronically, or for us to review?
And just to clarify, just to make sure, when using the terminology the same way I am, you've seen the findings of the PPC. That's what the initial order is.
Right, but we haven't seen what theirs was based on.
The proposed findings would come from Mark, and the evidence, the exhibits, I'll get those to Peggy, and we'll figure out how to get them to you.
Documentation.
Right. Fairly quickly. That's not going to be that difficult to get.
But Mark, you said they would be based on the discussion. Did you mean the discussion we had today, or the discussion we'll have at the next meeting? I thought you were gonna, we were gonna have findings at the next meeting, but it sounds like maybe...
Well, it's going to be both. I mean, we're going to try, we're going to do our best to put together some proposed findings based on what we heard today. Scott and I maybe need to coordinate a little bit more after the meeting. I believe that since you simply rejected the recommendation of the PPC, I believe that you can take that up as a new motion, and it can rise and fall based on the vote that occurs. I mean, because once you have all the data, I mean, it couldn't, the reality is, you had one board member missing, so it could, and it only failed because it was a five-to-four. I'm not suggesting any outcome. I just think that procedurally, it comes to you fresh for you to make that decision, once you, once you, once you review the documentation.
I just, I have a clarification, though. Even if the vote had been a different split, we still would have had to bring back to the board the evidence that PPC looked at and a proposed finding of fact. So the vote didn't matter, that it was five-four, and we had one member missing.
Correct. It didn't vote, the vote didn't matter, it's just that you didn't approve the PPC's findings.
Well, we'll have it back with us again next month, then. Thank you. Mark, was there?
That's all I had, unless you had any questions for me.
Anything else you had to report? All right, it's time to hear from our legislative liaisons. We'll begin with Ken Willard.
You have already received, I think, Deana's very well, very comprehensive report, and a smaller one from me. Both of us have been there quite a bit. I think Deana may have been there more this past couple, this past month than I have. I had to be out for an entire month. But a lot, although I've not been involved in the meetings surrounding the all-day kindergarten, I've been in a lot of one-on-one conversations around. This is not an effort to predict what the legislature's going to do, because I couldn't do that, but my sense is that it's not going to go very far. But, you know, I could be totally wrong. But I don't know that I have a whole lot more to add. Personally, I just would like to say that, you know, there was someone here today who thought that we ought to be taking a public position and advocating for or against the school finance lawsuit, which in my view is not correct. That really is not our bailiwick or our scope of authority, and so my counsel on that, my position on that would be, I'm going to be non-committal. The court made their decision, the legislature has to deal with it, we don't. It's not really affecting us to that all that much. So I think that's about all I have to say that you don't already know, so if you have questions, I'll be, I'll try to respond to them.
Questions for Ken? Well, let's hear from Deana. Maybe that'll jog our memories into some other questions.
Well, I'm not going to spend time going back over what I've already sent you, so just a comment that I would kind of concur with Ken, that I think because of the decision by the courts, that the, that that decision will probably affect the capability of the legislature to fund K through 12, or all-day kindergarten, even if, even if they would like to. But just to kind of give you an indication that Thursday, there is another meeting, and there will be three people who will be presenting. Dr. Donald Fass from Education Educational Design Solutions, and this is at 7:15 in the morning, so it's an early meeting.
I'll be able to see you, I won't be there.
And a retired kindergarten teacher, Roxy Peterson. I don't know where she came from, but Dr. Eva Horn, KU School of Ed. And they will be discussing their committee report. And they will be discussing their committee report. So, I think they're getting ready to wrap up what they've been hearing and doing. And if...
Is that all, Ken?
Yes. And if any of you are interested in finding out what's happening with a specific bill, I have the Bill Finder with me and you can find out what, a lot of bills that weren't worked, were sent back to, were taken, withdrawn from the calendar, placed in an exempt committee, and then re-referred to education or another committee. So, that's part of the process.
Madam Chair.
I might...
Ken Wellard.
I might just add that one of the bills that Deena is referring to that went to an exempt committee was the bill that would have abandoned all of our standards, you know, reading and math and history of social studies and career tax standards and all that sort of thing. That is one that was sent to an exempt committee. I think it was Ways and Means and then is, to keep it alive. But I really, I'm not sure there's momentum for that bill to carry either. So, I think that's...
And I would concur with that.
Yeah.
Visiting with many of the members who are not on the education committee as well.
Right.
But we'll see. Things, you never know. Life is never dead across the street.
That is true.
That is your bill. Or an idea. So, if you have questions or comments, I appreciate the support that many of you have given by being present at some point. So, thanks for that and also knowing that we could call on you if we needed you, and it may still occur.
Kathy Bush.
Kathy Bush.
I just have a question for Ken or Deena. As far as the at-risk conversations that have been going on before committee lately, any reports on any of that?
I reported on that committee hearing. And electronically to you, and there really, there was no, there was, it was just a hearing. There was just information put out there, questions about whether or not at-risk money is actually spent on at-risk kids or if it goes to other places, and questions about the basis for at-risk funding. So, it was just kind of an information gathering for the legislators, and nothing has come of that that I know of. And by the way, I will not be there at the legislature at all this week because I leave from here to go to NASB. And so, Deena may feel the need to call on someone to help her this next week to cover things. It's a bit difficult to cover it all because there are two or three things going on at the same time, so.
Right.
And not that it's, you know, we can find out what happened even if we're not there, but if somebody would like to be there.
And there was a bill that was in Senate Judiciary that kind of snuck through without any opposition and no one was neutral on it. That was, that makes, for example, if a teacher would recklessly leave an art book on her desk and a child came over and thumbed through it and saw a nude, they could be charged with a Class B misdemeanor. So, there's some reactions to, that was in reaction to the poster that I think we all are familiar with. So, there's some interesting concepts. And actually, that was on the Senate floor, passed out of Judiciary, and they passed over it. I haven't looked to see what else has happened to it. So, there are things in other committees that sometimes the names of, if I looked at the title of that bill, I thought it was about keeping pornography away from children and had nothing to do with education, but it had everything to do with education. So, that's part of my fault not paying attention to that either. So, we never know what ideas might be there. So, anyway.
Well, thank you, and thank you, Deena and Ken, for all the time you dedicate to being there and informing us and sending us reports. We do appreciate it. Our policy committee made their report this morning. I can't think of any other committees. Well, does the communications committee have a report today?
It could.
No.
Okay.
You don't have anything special for us?
Sally does.
Sally can take the lead.
Yes, we do have.
Something to...
A little bit. I'm going to start it down here with Steve. We only signed up for half the legislative session in case they need to call on us to be up there. And this is when things got really crazy. Last year was the last three weeks. And they're starting to be on the floor, and that's sometimes when we need to be up there. And go ahead, and if there's two on the same week, that's okay. Sometimes it might take that to cover everybody we need to cover.
Sally, if I could just add, we didn't know how long, if there's a veto session, so that schedule might extend a little longer. But I did want to note on your original sign-up, nobody chose this week as a board, but if there was a need for somebody Thursday or Friday, we might ask for volunteers.
Okay.
Since there's no one on that.
I hope everybody listened to that.
I'll be here Thursday, but I will not, I'm probably not going to be here Friday.
Okay.
But...
Jim, was that our only one? And we, so we have a report next month?
We have a couple of things.
Okay. I didn't know if I was supposed to bring up this letter this month.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Part of our communication was that we want to talk to students, and so we've put together a little thing, only these are the students that will be our educators. And there's a letter that has been put together that we would mail to the schools of education saying that we, as board members, are willing to come and visit with those future teachers. And we will put a PowerPoint together for you all to approve before we send it out so that we all say the same thing to these schools. If you are not comfortable or you do not have the time to do this, we fully understand that. And I'm going to start this down at the end also, Steve, and just put your name, your district, and your phone number if you're willing to do that. The schools of education will receive basically this letter with the speakers that are willing to speak, and then they will contact us directly. They won't go through Peggy. And so, they will choose off of the list of whom they want to have come speak. But I need to know which ones of you that are willing to do this. And so, we'll start down with Steve, and if we get, we don't get any signatures, then we'll think the idea's dead in the water, right? Jim?
Hopefully not. Part of our outreach program in terms of communication...
Either way, you and I will do them all.
Is to speak with universities, students, kind of like what we had here today in terms of student teachers. It could also be for graduate school as well, for programs in education and educational administration, letting them know what our roles, responsibilities, and who we are. So, I'd encourage you to sign up if you're so inclined. If not, we'll have folks there.
Janet Wu.
Thank you. I'd just simply like to respond to this. I read this before. I think it's an excellent idea. I've done this several years at KU, at their Lawrence, I mean, at Lawrence and in Olathe. And Kathy Tulcos did me, made a really good PowerPoint for me that showed state and federal, and Denise, I hope maybe you still have it. So, it could maybe be updated, you know, but it was excellent. So, just if you would like some help, I mean, it certainly helped me. So, suggestion.
Something nice to have to work off of.
Our last item from our committee is just a short one. At the last meeting, I discussed the fact that we would like districts to have a link on their website that links to KSDE. And we just want to make sure that that's okay with the board. There's no disagreement on that or hesitation. We'll be, many of them have a link already.
Good idea.
You know, and we'd just like to make sure that the board knew that we were going to ask them to place a link on their website. It's up to them. We're not forcing them to do it. It's their decision, but we'd like to encourage them to do that and let them know that that's available.
So, was that message going to come from the department?
From the department.
Okay. I thought maybe each one of us was supposed to communicate that to our district.
Well, you could, I would certainly reinforce it.
Okay.
That would be very good.
Okay.
But I think the district could, the department would be more thorough.
Yeah.
In getting that out. But just so you know what we're doing, we don't want to surprise anybody.
Thank you.
That's okay with you guys? We'll go ahead and do it. Thank you.
Deena Horst.
I might also add that it might be a good idea to ask organizations, education organizations, to do the same. And that way, there's multiple, multiple spots that they can...
I think that's a great, thank you.
They can find us...
Thank you. Hadn't thought of that. Again, if no one has any objections, I think we can follow that, just making our presence broader and more significant in the state. So, thank you very much. Good recommendation, Deena.
And again, we want to thank your committee for all the work that you've been doing to help us get our message out there. It's much appreciated. We'll go on to our board reports, and I'll start down at that end of the table with Kathy Bush.
I don't think I have anything.
How about Jim McNeese?
I'm good.
Well, I was a part of the negotiations process at School for the Deaf, and it went extremely smoothly and very quickly. And in fact, I think we were done early. And it was also my pleasure to go on one of, be at one of the sites where the governor was visiting, all-day kindergarten. And I went to Manhattan, to Woodrow Wilson, and the things that are going on in those school, in that school, in both of those kindergarten classes, I wish every person who thinks all-day kindergarten isn't valuable could watch what those children in February are doing. They are reading books, some of them are reading chapter books. They're all recognizing words and getting ready to read if they aren't already. And as a grandmother of a three-year-old, I'm just hopeful that all-day kindergarten comes to Salina, which does not have it by the time he is ready for kindergarten because actually I think he's, he may be ready for first grade if he's, if they don't have kindergarten because of the things he's already doing as a three-year-old. And he's not, you know, all of us think our grandchildren are the smartest ones ever and gifted and so on, but I think he's not that out of the ordinary. So, I hope we will continue to pursue that opportunity. And hopefully, the one at El Saline will be rescheduled so we can see what's going on there as well because it's one where people pay tuition to go to. So, anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Carolyn Campbell.
Thank you. I just don't have any specific to report other than I have been visiting schools in my district, and unfortunately, it's the struggle for money, even for the trips, field trips and all, and the stress of that even, that's a concern that I'm hearing.
And I did attend the King Conference and the banquet for the Milken Award winner. Yalanda was there, she forgot to mention it, and the luncheon for the Horizon Award winners, and then Teachers of Promise were also recognized. That event is so inspirational to me, to see the enthusiasm and the dedication of these young people to education. So, I hope we'll be able to continue this type of recognition for our beginning teachers, our new teachers, and our experienced teachers. And I want to say Diane's comments, as usual, were inspirational, too. Sally Cobble.
Thank you. I had an opportunity to go to Atlanta, Georgia with some of our staff for Next Generation Science Standards, in which a chief put the conference on, and it was supposed to be a work study, a work group, to where you plan out how you're going to implement the Next Generation Science Standards. It was very well done. They gave us multiple times to work together as a state, and the speakers were very, were outstanding. Of course, in any of those conferences, half of it is getting to know the people that go with you. And I had a really good time with our staff. Denise went, Matt and Jay, and then, oh, I forgot her name, from KU. Oh, shoot. I know her. I just can't bring it off the top of my head. But anyway, they were a good group to work with and came and approached an idea from multiple different directions. And Madam Chairman, I'd just like to say that Matt has a plan. We have a plan. And I would appreciate it if we would start putting him on our agenda on somewhat of a regular basis to let us know what that plan is and keep us on the timeline and update us for that plan. And I think we would all find that very interesting, and then we'd know where we are. So, that would be a recommendation for future board members. And that was all. Oh, we got to go to the aquarium. It was at the aquarium in Atlanta. And if you ever have an opportunity... And if you ever have an opportunity, it's worth going to Atlanta to see the aquarium. Make sure you take one of those grandchildren.
Janet Wall.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just for your information, I did attend a conference in Kansas Public Ed meeting last week, and just want to, a reminder, May the 4th at Washburn is the Governor's Scholars Luncheon and Recognition. That's a fun day, and, you know, they honor the top graduates in the state. And it's really kind of fun, and I encourage you to come if you can. Starts lunch, they start about 11:00, 11:30. Then the ceremony starts, I think, about 1:00, if I'm not mistaken. So anyway, I really encourage you to do that. Did you want future agenda items? She just gave, I don't know if you wanted that yet or not.
I was going to ask for those after.
Okay. No problem. Thank you.
I was asked by the Colorado State Board member, who was supposed to attend and participate in the National Teacher Hall of Fame selections, if I could do it, since I was closer, because she had another commitment, and so I agreed to do that. That was quite interesting. There were 20, 20.
Is that the one that's in important?
Yes.
Yes.
Had 20 portfolios to read through and score. And then we met for a very interesting process of selecting the top five that all get inducted into the Hall of Fame. And I know who they are, and I can't tell you who they are. But when they, when a suitable date is figured out, when they can all be there at one time, there will be an induction ceremony, and I'll try to attend that. But that was not something that was in my normal duties, but I accepted, and it was very interesting. So, yeah. Very similar, I think, to what we do for Teacher, Kansas Teacher Hall of Fame, or Kansas Teacher of the Year, but this was actually a selection committee, and you knew when you left who won. In the Teacher of the Year deals, we score all these videos and everything, and then you don't know until the actual ceremony. So this is a bit different. I enjoyed it.
Well, I hope you can go to the awards thing. I've been a couple times, and it'll be so meaningful to you, because you knew a lot about these people, so.
One of the, one of the teachers who was in the, in the 20 was one that I know fairly well. And so I was a little reluctant to score her, because in the Teacher of the Year deal, if you know them, you don't score them. But I did, went ahead and scored it, and then I let everybody know that I did score it. And in fact, I probably scored her a bit low, because I didn't know her. I didn't want to prejudice anything. But it turns out she's in the top five, so.
Oh, good. Well, that's good.
Anything else, Ken?
I think, I did attend one of the, the all-day kindergarten events that the governor was doing in Mays, Vermillion Elementary School. And that was very interesting. They are doing some, you know, the thing that I noticed, I've, as you all know personally, have not been 100% behind the all-day kindergarten deal because, for various reasons. But I did go and have supported the governor's effort to try to get that done. But the thing that was remarkable to me is that kids in kindergarten are far ahead of where I was when I got out of first grade. I didn't, there wasn't a such thing as kindergarten when I was, at least I didn't know about it. So, but they are, they are learning so much more at earlier ages. Whether that's a good thing or a bad thing is difficult for me to decipher. And part of the reason, I think, diverging a bit, or digressing a bit, that I think it's, there's not a lot of chance for it in the legislature, is the, the research is so inconclusive, you know? Some, some researches, studies show that it definitely makes a difference, others that it doesn't, or they're not, they don't, don't really come down on that. So I think that's kind of what, part of what we have to deal with regarding that, that issue. That's it.
Okay. Thank you. Steve Roberts.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just briefly, I went to a couple of the meetings at the State House, one on Common Core, where I officially testified neutral. I was the only one who did. And also went to the at-risk committee hearing. On a personal note, I was going to go on a mission trip, March 14th, to Jamaica to help set up a school, but my work with NASB on the Rural Education Study Group has precluded that, so my priorities will be in Washington, D.C., instead of sunny, warm Jamaica.
Thank you. Now, are there requests for future agenda items? Kathy Bush.
And this might easily be able to tag on to what Sally suggested, as far as the implementation plan for next-gen science standards. My understanding is that there's quite a bit being done, as far as people being trained to be implementation folks, as far as math and English language arts. So it might be interesting to just kind of have the whole picture as, as some of the things, as far as implementation, they're concerned. Because I know you're doing a lot, but I'm not sure that the public is aware of the training that is going on, or the plans that are going on. So I think they could be all put together.
Janet Wall.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My request for a future agenda item is the Supreme Court decision that came down referenced, I believe, the Rose case in Kentucky. Am I correct? And why, in which they listed, were there seven standards, or whatever you want to call them, that needed to be included in a quality education? I would like to have, I'd like to have a discussion on that, or at least a report on that at our, at a future, a future meeting, preferably sooner than later, because I would like to see if that's what we're currently doing, and are we currently doing that, or do we need to make some adjustments? Are they, you know, just look and see what's going on right now with Kansas, that part of the decision? Thank you.
Are there others?
I saw hands down this way, so who was it? Ken Willard?
Madam Chair, I had brought up a couple months ago, an issue, the issue of data security. And I don't think we've revisited that since that time. I know that there's a bill in the legislature that deals with it. And although I think we're doing everything we can possibly do to provide security, I think we need to revisit it just for the public benefit. We need to, we need to be able to defend that position that we're doing it. And if there are any, I mean, there are, I've even heard recently that there are some concerns about FERPA not being as, as strong as it needs to be. So, you know, I think that we need to be very, very diligent on this whole data security piece, because we get, there are a lot of curious things being said out there about it, and I think we shouldn't ignore it. We ought to just face it head-on. And so I would like to revisit that with a presentation or something for us to consider.
Thank you. Steve Roberts.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Couple of things. One is, as I look over the standards for professional learning, and recognize that we all agree that lifelong learning is one of our goals, and professional learning is part of being a professional educator, I would like to bring to this board a motion probably in May or June, that would read something along the lines of, you don't necessarily have to go to teachers' college to be an effective educator. And so I would like that on the agenda at some point. The other one is, in a conversation with Matt Crable, or Cryble, Crable, about the ownership of the NGSS standards, I have some concerns that, oh, sometime in the future, five, 10 years from now, somebody may come along and say, you know, you don't really own these standards. When they were originally promulgated, there was a 15% codicil in there. And I'd like to make sure, because I've been assured by persons throughout the department and by Matt himself, that we own the standards. And I think we need to nail that down a little better, to preclude someone from, say, a corporate environment, years down the road, to saying otherwise. And I'd like that to be on the agenda.
Thank you. John Bacon.
Thank you. I just want to back up just real quick. I don't know if any of you heard or not, but I think it was John Boehner that appointed Kevin Yoder to the Board of Trustees of Gallaudet University. I just heard that, so I wanted to make everybody aware of that.
He was previously on it, I believe. He reappointed. Is that right?
I didn't think he was on there before. I think, I thought this is a new appointment, but could be.
I was thinking.
All right. That's interesting. First I heard of it.
Was there someone down here that had a future agenda item? Deana Horst.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It was brought to my attention that, by a number of individuals, that sometimes districts are giving credit for visual art when there's, when the teacher is qualified, a qualified teacher in what they're teaching, but not in the arts, has no background in the arts. And I guess I'd like to know more about why we would not know that that's occurring, and why, why, if we do know that it's occurring, why we are saying that's okay.
Okay. Thank you. Other requests? If not, we will take a, let's see, what are we? We had a 15-minute break scheduled, so let's go ahead and take a 15-minute break, or until a quarter till 3:00. We're having way too much fun here, Dale.
We're gathered here together in the sight of these witnesses.
I think most of the board members are back in the room, so we'll resume. Oh, okay. So we'll resume our meeting.
I'll join you. You may want to say something. I don't blame you if you don't.
I don't think he heard you. Craig.
He's coming. Hey, it's great. Let me just give you kind of a nutshell of what's going on across the street. Not much right now, since the court case come down. Everything is centered on it. We're going to review a few bills with you, but I want you to know, there's very, very few bills that's moved any distance at all. Most of them are still in the same original house. And if it's a bill they want, they've had it blessed by a special committee. And, but, well, they just hit a few high with spots, and there's, there's a few of these that haven't moved that are critical, and I'll kind of identify those. Senate Bill 22 and House Bill 2400, I don't know that bill will move, but it's in both houses, same bill. And what it provides is a select group of students that if you're, and I have an IEP, or if you're a low-income poverty student, you switch from public to private, why you can get a grant from a scholarship-granting organization that's hereby created. And if you donate to that, you get a complete tax write-off. So Brother Bacon Incorporated decided to give this $10,000, he'd get $10,000 on tax credit, if it passed. Not a DDA, a tax credit. Kansas only. Yeah, that's right. But anyway, and, and we have to play a role in that. We had to do a lot of the record-keeping, the monitoring and all that, and we'd get a little bit of money to do that with. But the setting up the scholarship organizations and for somebody to take the money would become a little bit of a challenge, particularly in the beginning. And the bill hasn't moved, but it had been a lot of talk. The next one we wanted to mention is Senate Bill 277, and that one is very crucial. That's the base state aid per pupil for the LOB. And if that is not approved, it will have the effect of reducing expenditures in the LOB fund by over $100 million. Over $100 million. That, that would, that would cause a lot of letters going out across the state if that isn't done. It worries me a little bit. I think it'll pass when it comes up, but if you get too late down the road, and so with sending those letters out, it could really cause morale problems. So, and I think they intend to do something before it's too late to do that, and, but I think they'll put it in a package, be my guess, because it hadn't moved, but everybody's talking about it.
Clarify, in case you weren't sure, with sending those letters out, if you're going to non-renew a teacher, you notify them by letter. You have to put it in writing.
Or, or an administrator, either group, they're all covered by the continuing contract law. It's a good point.
Dale, I do have a question. That court ruling did say that the LOB had to be funded at, wasn't it 100%?
100% of the state aid formula.
Okay.
The formula, and that's about $103,865 million.
This wouldn't have any bearing on that.
Well, it could. Maybe not on that particular point, but if you cut the expenditures, now think about this. Remember, the base is going back to the district court to make that decision. If you cut expenditures by 100-plus million, it could have effect what they, what the money that they might decide is needed to meet the Rose standards or the 721127. You with me? It could. So I think they intend to do this. The court, in essence, said the LOB's okay if you fund it. And so I don't believe, I believe they'll fund it, and I believe they'll approve this, but $100 million cut at this particular time would be very strenuous at the local level.
Thank you.
305 is a bill that, and I want you to follow me on this one, because this, I think it's a little complicated. If you really want to get it complicated, read it. But what it says is, in 305, and this will have a big impact on, across the state, that any, there, after July 1 of 2014, any bond issue that passes, there will be no state aid for the bond interest. But we are required to compute the state aid as if they're going to get it and put it in the local option budget. But I want you to think about that. How many districts without state aid will pass a bond issue? Those with high valuation will, but the poor districts could not. Let me give you a quick example. One, this happened in Girard, because they have, they have one, I think, before the board this month. They're about a 55 or 6% state aid district in bonds. Their mill levy's going to be 11 mills. Well, if they lost the state aid, their mill levy for the bonds would go to 23 or 4 mills. I asked him, I said, well, would it pass? He said, oh, no, I wouldn't even try it. I'd forget it. He said, we're stretching the urban the way it is. But think, who would, who would try to run the bond issue without state support? It'll more likely to be the higher, higher wealth districts. Someplace like, I named counties, Osay, Jefferson, Jackson, Ford, like Dodge, Garden Liberal, Woodstall, Southeast Candace, Topeka, they wouldn't probably run a bond issue very likely, unless it was absolutely essential, because there'd be no state support. So the money that would be computed, that they'd be entitled to, I think will drop significantly if the bill passes.
Dale, I, I've communicated this to you before, because it frustrates me. Proponents of this bill were saying down in my area that it would lower property taxes. I couldn't see how that would be possible.
Well, it would, but it'd be very slightly, because it's the state aid you're going to compute for those. going to, to compute for those districts that pass bond issues with no state support. And no bond interest state aid goes to the school districts after July 1 of 14 on new elections. So who's likely to pass a bond issue after July 1? It's more likely to be the higher wealth districts, because, and see, when the higher wealth districts, there ain't much state aid there. There wouldn't be much state aid. So we're getting, we're getting a lot of bond issues that they plan to really, to do this in the next year or two. But because of all the chatter in the legislature about the bond issues, a lot of them are hurried. Remember, the last two or three months, things have picked up. And so, and, anyway, I, I think there's a little bit of a misnomer, because those that have the bond issues will be fairly wealthy, and they're not entitled to state aid. I tell you right now, there, there'll be bond issues, John Orin York County, because of growing enrollment. But the state aid percentage is not very high. It's pretty good in Olahtha, Spring Hill, but the rest of them is not very much. So there wouldn't be much state aid to move over.
You got a question.
Okay. Yeah.
If the money that would have been used for the capital outlay equalization is, instead goes to the LOB, is that, is that what you said, is what the bill said?
No. I say it's the bond and interest, it's called capital improvement aid technically, will compute what those districts have bond issues after July 1. How much state aid they get.
Mm-hmm.
They won't get it. We'll just compute it, then we'll move it back to the LOB. And that piece, that piece would help the LOB. But it will not help those in paying back the bonds.
But the state aid goes to the LOB. Tell me exactly what that means.
Okay. Let me give you, let me give you a couple of examples. And let's say, for example, in, in, that we pick, oh, Burlington down here, they have a bond issue. They're entitled to no state aid. So they have a bond issue, so we have to compute the state aid they're entitled to and move it to the LOB. They're not entitled to something, so they get zero. Now, if we have another bond issue, and, and they probably will, Olahtha'd be a good one, because they're growing, I think, 400 kids a year or so, give or take a little. They have a bond issue, they're entitled to bond interest state aid. They won't get it. But we'll compute the state aid they would have received under the bond interest state aid, and then we'll move it to the local option budget.
And distribute it across the entire state.
Goes across the state. Not to their district, across the state.
Okay, that was my question.
That's a good point.
That was my question, okay.
Across the state. And so.
So in that respect, it, it would possibly represent a small reduction in property tax.
Yeah. Where the peanut is, Ken, the theory is, is not so bad, except when you don't do the bond interest state aid for the poor districts, they're not going to have a, they won't have a bond issue unless it's just a disaster. I mean, it's got to be really severe, because the property tax is just too high.
And in view of this court decision, you think this bill still has legs?
It hasn't moved with a great deal of speed. Not yet. Not yet. They've had hearings on it and all that, but it, if they do it, Ken, I think it'll be a part of some package if they do it.
Kathy Bush has a question.
Just kind of to follow up on that. So if you have these districts that have low mill levies, and then they get high state aid, so if you gave your Olahtha example, and it spreads out, or Blue Valley, or whoever, it spreads out throughout the state, then you're just increasing the disparity as far as capital outlay. That's part of the court case, aren't you?
Yeah. You just, the price you'd be creating disparity would be in the bond and interest state aid fund.
Right.
That's right. There's no doubt about that. You'd be helping the LOB, but, but going the opposite direction in bond interest. That's correct. But you had a big bond issue out in Olahtha and Wichita, and without the state aid on that, it would've been very, very difficult to sell.
Oh, it wouldn't have passed.
And about most of them that are, Topeka, I bet they'd say the same thing, I think they're 44%. It'd be very, very difficult like that, but I think those will, those will go away, a lot of them, unless it's a dire emergency.
Dina Horst.
Thank you. Just to clarify, if we're talking about state aid, the state aid portion of the bonds being transferred to the, what's essentially the LOB, is that on a district basis, or is it collectively across the state?
Across the state.
So it totally would go back into?
The pot.
The pot, and so, and because very few districts that need that would be building, it probably would be fairly limited.
Well, the guy said, oh, here, there'd be some, but it would not, it would not be a large amount of money.
Yeah.
It'd be small.
Okay.
That's correct.
Thanks. But those that need it and have to build a new school, their, their property taxes would skyrocket.
It, right now, it is difficult for poor districts to sell a bond issue if you're going to put it all on property tax. It's extremely challenging. That's just the way it is. Property tax is very sensitive. Good questions. 335, Craig, that's the one that is interesting. If you have a staff member that you believe is suspicious and act like they might be on drugs, why, you can test them to determine whether they're not, they're on drugs. And, you know.
Let's, let's clarify. If a local board has a staff member, not you.
No, yeah, no.
He said if you have a staff member.
Yeah. I don't know. It might expand it. Okay. If you act weird, other words, but, okay. But the, the point of it is, this isn't, this is, can be a little challenging. We had one, I think, in Sedgwick County where they tested an employee and failed. She was on oxycodone. And, but her, the amount of oxycodone she had in her, in her body was much greater than the prescription. But, but you think about it, have you ever taken, if you had a lot of pain, ever taken more than what the, the doctor prescribed? I don't know. But I mean, it, it's not simple. It's not a simple issue. And I don't know about the case, but, and there's a lot of different prescription drugs out there and so on. So you get into that issue, and probably if they're acting a little suspicious, it may not be in a classroom, but it may be something, maybe good, some reasons for, where you have severe pain. Anyway, there's another piece of that one, Craig, if I remember right.
The fingerprints.
Yeah. Go ahead.
As a part of the testing for illegal drugs, the State Department would create and implement an impaired teacher program to assist those teachers who were having difficulties with, with illegal substances.
Well, we only use the boardroom two, two days a week. No, I don't know. That, they didn't got that far, and it would take some money, and you'd have to get some highly skilled professionals. And it'd probably, in all honesty, to help them set it up, you'd have to probably get contracts, and that'd be in different parts of the state, people willing to travel. But the other piece of that, bill also requires, and, and this is something that you worked hard on, that any person who renews their teaching license will have to be fingerprinted one time. Everybody gets one, a one-time fingerprint. McNeese, when you renew your license, you're going to have to be fingerprinted. Hmm? You got yours? You, you still got it?
I'm used to it.
Have you still got yours?
No.
Kathy, you got yours, don't you?
Oh, mine, yes.
Do you? Well, if you go back to renew it, requires fingerprinting. One more I want to mention, and this is kind of surprising, because I bet you if we'd taken a vote on 341 back beginning, the night after the State of the State, I bet you that many of us would have thought that the Olahtha kindergarten phase-in would move forward to some degree. If, I, it hasn't moved. We've had a lot, we have a special, and it's interesting, I noticed, this is Senate Bill 341 in the Senate. The House has got a special committee, and we've met, I think, the fifth time this week on that issue. And they don't have a bill, which is kind of interesting. They don't have a bill, so I wouldn't, that bill's not moved, and I wouldn't put a lot of money in it, particularly a lot of the court case. And, and no secret, leadership, some leadership members have not been excited about it. Ken, you heard some of that, I think. Craig, 2227.
House Bill 2227 moves the date that local board members are elected. They would be elected in November of odd numbered years, and if elected, would take office in January. It, it would be nonpartisan elections.
But doesn't that, excuse me, didn't that include the fact that if they had an appointment to make, the appointment would no longer be made by the local board, it would be made by the precinct committee people?
I believe it is still written that way.
That's what I thought.
The appointment, yes, would probably be partisan, but when they ran for office, they wouldn't have to designate Republican, Democrat. Yes.
So if they ran for office, but it wasn't partisan, and then they resigned from the board, how do we know which party makes the appointment? Would it be the party, that person that ran, not on a party?
It would be the party of which, to which that board member is registered as.
Okay. Thank you.
And if they're registered as independent?
May I ask?
Yeah.
Sally Cobble.
Is that getting much traction? I've been at several forums, and a good number of local board members are letting them know that they feel like their local control is being taken away.
It's not moved very fast, but quite a bit of talk. Not moved fast, but quite a bit of talk. The other thing is, it becomes, let me give you another little example. Somebody retired, or quits, and say there, you get several candidates, and they're all, and the person who resigned, he's an independent, just for fun. And the people that apply and interested in it, some are Republicans, some are Democrats. So who do you appoint? And who represents? It, it, there's some, there's some challenges there. The 2289, I just want to mention.
Dale, how, how does a primary work in that situation?
John Bacon.
Because don't you have to declare a party in, in Kansas, to vote in the primary?
Vote in the primary.
Yep.
Vote, not running for local.
Well.
They'd about have to.
So if you've got five individuals that are wanting a seat on a local board, and so you've got to have a runoff.
Evidently, everybody would have to have that on their ballot. That election would be on both ballots.
That's what I was wondering.
Yes. I don't know.
Okay.
There, there's several things you have to be ironed out on that, John, but that's a great question, and, and they try to say it's nonpartisan, but it makes it partisan in that process. I want to mention 3, 2289, Common Core. I'm not hearing much on Common Core. It just kind of, I'm not hearing much on that one at all. 2454, we had two hearings on that. That's the bill that raises, takes it two and a half miles and moved it back to 10 miles. That bill is tabled, and I think it'll stay there. I don't think that's going anywhere. Let me tell you another one, and this don't, this don't have any effect unless you're in two places, but it's something to consider. House Bill 2456 is a bill that relates to cement plants. And there's a cement plant in Chanute and in Humboldt. The bigger one, I think, is in Chanute. And a superintendent called the other day, Dr. Hardy down at Chanute, and he was, he was kind of low. If this bill passes and they change the equipment there from real estate to personal property, change the, the assessment, he'll have to pay back $1 million. And, and, and his valuation, it varied, this is made up of his evaluation, it, now it's, I think it's, it was starting, at one time it's 51%, now I think it's 34, what he told us the other day. But it will have a major impact. Now, that hurts, and in Humboldt, I'm not sure of their numbers, but it'll, it'll have quite an impact, because Humboldt's pretty small. The question that scares some people is, well, what about the ethanol plants? This is specifically for cement plants. But if you owned an ethanol plant, would you come in with the same argument? If you owned some kind of natural gas substation? The concern for many is, will it stop right there? Will it stop? So, anyway, but I know Chanute is very worried about it. House Bill 2475 is personal financial literacy, and really, this bill, no mandates in it except one, and it applies to us. We have to pull out the questions on the state assessments on personal financial literacy and give a report to the legislature as to how well they did on those questions. The, I don't recall anything else on that one, and that, that should not be a big effort on our part to do that. The, everything else is centered on the court case since about, what time we get the first call? I don't know. Sometime mid-morning. We've had eight projects legislative requests since that time. And so we, we have the opportunity to work on that tonight. So, and we'll get most of them done sometime tonight.
This is just a small thing. Well, but anyway, what happened to the bill having to do with the Teacher of the Year recognition? Is it still alive?
2686, I believe. And that, that bill has not moved, but it, but he still talks about it a lot, the sponsor. And what it does is, thanks, 2886. I think it did. Isn't it 2686?
Yeah. That, that's what I wanted to know, if it was still alive.
They still, the people behind this, in the House, he wants to kill all programs that recognize teachers, except Milken. So that'd be like the math and science, it would be like the Teacher of the Year program, they would be killed. And then the legis, what do they call it? The teacher, Legislative Teacher Award System.
Kansas Legislature Award for Teaching Excellence.
So, but where the peanut will come in is, he thinks that he can, down the road, raise that from private funds. And many times, you can raise money from private funds, one time, maybe twice, but lot, it's, long-term, it's hard to do. That's, that's a lot of work to do that. And, and he says that he can raise the money. Well, and that may be true, but who's going to do it if he's not there? And so that, that, that's troublesome. You set it up, but anyway, the, the Teachers of the Year, they're watching that very close. The teams that we've had over the period of time, they're watching that very, very close. Because the other thing is, we established the, the foundation, and we got, we use the interest off of that to fund their travel and all that. And he does, he does not want them on the road, that team on the road out doing staff development. He wants them in the classroom.
Who is he? Carrie Dunn.
She said it.
Where, where's the Senate Department?
Carrie Dunn. So.
Okay. Well, thank you. I just wondered.
I have a question.
Jim McNeese?
Where are we on the Kansas State High School Activity Association Executive Board reorganization?
That bill came out of the Senate, I believe. Came out of the Senate. I didn't list it there, but it, that came out of the Senate where they changed the makeup. It goes to the House. I don't know that the House is, is, that is excited about it as the Senate was. But we'll, we'll find out, but you.
Actually, they are in the House.
Yeah. But the Senate made numerous amendments since. But the Senate made numerous amendments, and it's got to go back. And, but it probably, it changes some of the control of the, of the association. There's no direct state aid that goes to the association, not direct. The other thing I wanted to mention is, that worries us big time, and it all, for the schools and for us, for the agency too, is, we were supposed to have our bill out of the, reported to Senate Ways and Means, and, and pretty well done by now, but it's all in hold. It's on hold. Senate, we, we thought we would get a bill that'd come out this week, I just, we just got a note a little while ago that says it may be delayed until next week. I think they'll, they'll settle it until we see what the school finance plan is, and put the money in at, at that point in time, whatever they decide. So, it's a, a lot of challenges, and there's a lot of people over there that has never had to react to a court case like this. So there's a lot of education that will need to take place. What's said, and there's difference of opinions and all that, what's said, but Mr. Ferguson, I thought your summary was well-written, sir. Add that in for free. But anyway. And, and when it gets to the floor, and, and there'll be some interesting discussions in that process.
Well, thank you. Are there any other questions for Dale and Craig? All right.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Appreciate your time.
The consent agenda is the next item of business. I had reminded you this morning that there were three changes on, oh, where is it? Item 15, I. So, I trust you've had time to look at those. Would I hear a motion that we approve the consent agenda? Moved by Sally Cobble. Is there a second? Seconded by Janet Wall. Is there a discussion? There being none, all in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, John, was yours up?
Yes.
Okay, that's a 10-0 vote, thank you. I just went past it. Next, we will be approving board travel before we have the motion, though. I would like, if anyone has changes to their travel or other requests, for them to let us know before we have the motion and the vote. Carolyn Campbell.
Thank you, ma'am. I would like to add April 4th KC Awards Ceremony in Manhattan. Salary.
Are there other additions? Dina, did you have your hand up?
I have an event in Ottawa County for 12, on April the 12th, that I just found out about, so we might as well put it on now.
Can you tell us what it is?
It's, it's a forum.
A forum?
Yeah.
Okay. Did you get that, Peggy?
Yeah, that'd be fun.
All right, then, is there a motion to approve the board travel? With those additions? Moved by Carolyn Campbell, seconded by, do I have a second? Steve Roberts. All in favor, raise your right hand. All right, so our board travel is approved. Well, we are going to have an executive session at this point to cover three different areas, so, 40 minutes, okay. We're going to request 40 minutes, that will include all three of the topics, and we will have a motion from Sally Cobble.
Okay. I would like to move a motion to go anti-executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel matters of non-elected personnel in order to protect the privacy entrance, interests of the individuals to be discussed, also to consult with the attorney, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship, in order to protect the privilege and the board's communications with its attorney on legal matters. This session will last no longer than 40 minutes, and no action will be taken during the session. We would like to include Commissioner Debacker, Brad, Cheryl Whalen, and Mark Ferguson.
Three, to begin at 3:25 and go for 40 minutes. You heard the motion, is there a second? Seconded by Kathy Bush. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Madam Chairman, I need to add to that.
Oh, wait a minute.
Okay, just, don't vote, just a minute. We also need to consult with board's bargaining representation and employer, employer-employee negotiations to protect the public interest in negotiating a fair and equitable contract.
Okay, so Kathy made the motion, will you? Sally made the motion, so she added to it. Kathy, do you agree that, okay, good. Now, shall we vote? All in favor? All right, we have a 10-0 vote there. We will take a few minutes. In three minutes.
A bachelor's degree in one of the following subject matter areas, science, technology, engineering, math, has at least five years of work experience in such subject matter area, has secured a commitment from the Board of Education to hire them as a teacher in that subject matter area, and the last one I, that's it. An applicant shall be authorized to teach in the subject or subjects specified in the, the items I mentioned above. You can adopt rules and regulations, Senate Bill 430. That may be where they got the idea, I don't know, but I just, I just, I knew you'd been working on it, but I don't know the details of what we've been doing, but anyway. So, I just, they just brought it in and said you got to do a fiscal note on it, so.
I have a question.
Fiscal, I don't know them out too much, because.
I have a question.
Sally Cobble.
Okay, Mark, that is definitely an example of what we have been charged to do, even though it's part of a resolution that, or, what are we sending over, a resolute?
We'd ask for a reg change.
Reg change. Why? I don't know my question. But it frustrates me that they cannot seem to do what they need to do, and what their role is to do, and they keep coming up with these other, is there any, we can't really do anything, though, can we? Be, beyond taking them to court or something?
Right, and to further the frustration, you know, the Gannon decision said that courts don't give advisory opinion, so you have to have a specific statute that goes before, you know, before the court or before the Attorney General to interpret as to whether or not it's constitutionally valid, which is why we requested a, an Attorney General opinion on the Innovative Schools Act, because it passed, and so until certain laws are passed, we can't really get any determination from the Attorney General, and, or until litigation is filed, you won't get an interpretation as to whether it's constitutionally valid or not.
And I'm wondering if it's a matter of communication. Maybe folks in the legislature aren't aware that we've already proposed regulatory changes or have, have started the ball rolling on those, that at least the first two would be addressed. Ken Wellard.
I received a call a week or so ago about this subject, and I told them what we were trying to do. And, and this person told me what they were thinking, and I said, well, it's very similar to what we're already, we're already talking about. And so, you know, where there's overlap, I don't know, it may, it may die because we're already doing it, I don't know. I can't, I didn't know that.
And, and I appeared in front of Vision 2020 several weeks ago, and put, I, I let them know that we had those three items in front of the board, so Vision 2020, that committee did know about these three, so it's not like it was a secret.
Right.
At, at all.
Right.
And it's been on your agenda, so.
Other questions or comments, then? Thanks for making our day. Well, if there are none, Janet.
I just, I, I wanted to, to let the board know that I will, we will be resubmitting our opinion to the Attorney General, or our request for an opinion to the Attorney General on the same points that we asked for, or similar that we asked for in the letter that we sent last summer in June. Now that the Gannon case has been decided, it's time for us to ask once again for an opinion on the innovative districts bill, so we will be sending that on behalf, or from the agency under my name.
Thank you. Anything else? Then we are adjourned, recessed. I do that every time, until tomorrow at 9 o'clock at the school for the blind, right? Okay, thank you.